President.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All right, thank you for that. We have two items today on the agenda. If you'd like to make a public comment, please grab a comment card and get it to the clerk, and we'll start with item 3A.
Presentation regarding total comprehensive compensation and classification study.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Joyce Lira, Human Resources Director. Today, I'd like to talk about total classification and compensation and conducting a study to do so. A little bit about what total comp is, or total compensation. Most of you probably know this, but it's not just about base pay. Total compensation is more than that. It's about other kinds of pays that might be given to, for example, a firefighter, or a police officer. It might be about performance pay, and it also is about indirect pay. Things like benefits, and paid time off, and other things. And also, it's about the actual salary structure. It's about our philosophy as a city. So with that, I'd like to start into the presentation. A little bit about what I'd like to talk about today is when I'd like to talk a little bit about the background, why we want to do this study, how we want to do this study, what the phases are of the project, the timeline of the project, and the consultant that we're recommending for the study. So a little bit about the background, there was a study conducted in 2015. It was done by an outside consultant. And some of the recommendations were implemented, some were not. Many of the pay recommendations were implemented, some were compression issues, but a lot of the benefits weren't, and some of the comp weren't as well, and that was due to cost constraints. So the council requested a new study again, and it was placed in the budget for fiscal year 2020. So we launched an RFP back in September, and we got six proposals from six different consultants. All of them were from out of state. None of them were from Arizona. And then we had four vendors that were interviewed by a team of department directors. And this group actually loved Evergreen Solutions. They did a really good job in the presentation. The quality of their proposal was excellent. We conducted extensive references on them, and they came back great. However, there was a glitch that we are aware of and were made aware of in terms of, they had some issues with Carroll County Public Schools. And they conducted a study with Carroll County. And what happened there is they made some financial errors, some cost errors at the end. And so they admitted the mistake, they apologized for the mistake. What they did is they have extensive databases, and what they did, it's a heavily unionized organization, and what they did is they took their non-faculty and their faculty, and they combined them. So the unions were a little bit upset about that, and, but they did continue the study after all, and they rehired them in 2017. I did talk to Dr. Jeff Ling, and he assured me that we would have a different team. The project leader that was on the other study is not going to be involved in this at all. So despite that glitch, we would like to consider, and still consider, contracting with Evergreen. And the contract cost was $47,000. And just for your information, from the six proposals that we received, they varied from $39,000 to $270,000 for the same type of work. So why do we want to do this? Again, we want to develop a city compensation philosophy and total compensation strategy for the future. We don't want to have to do this every five years. We want to be able to have a system that's maintainable, and that where provided the tools and a system so we can do this ourselves and keep it maintained over a few years. Comp studies are usually done maybe every five to 10 years if they're well-maintained, or less, maybe after 10 years. We want to make sure that our employees have fair, competitive, and equitable pay and benefits. Right now, we have 500 employees approximately, and 200 job descriptions. We want something that's flexible. We want to look at more broadbanding our salary ranges. We want to be able to have career progression, succession planning, and have career laddering for our employees. And we also want to enable the city to attract and retain the best and the brightest. I guess it's been 50 years, and we haven't seen such low, low unemployment rates. I think we're around 3.5% nationwide, and 4.5% in Arizona and in Prescott. And what I do like about Evergreen, and so did the team, was that it provided a tool to maintain a sustainable system in the future. So the study would take three components, or actually, we'd look at three. One is the classification piece, which includes job descriptions, internal equity, and that is extremely important, the internal equity. We may be able to go out and do a salary survey for maybe not even a quarter of our positions, maybe an eighth of our positions, but what about the rest of them? What we need to do is we look at every single position to make sure that there's internal equity within the city. And we want to have a job evaluation system in order to do that. We also want to look at FLSA compliance, Fair Labor Standards Acts, is our employee, are employees non-exempt, exempt, subject to overtime or not? And then again, we want to look at career laddering. That's very important for us. On the compensation side, pay philosophy will be good, and we want to have external competitiveness. And we can do that. Whatever Green provides for us as other consultants, they have a variety of other studies they use. Although we'll have our own customized survey, they'll have the League of Cities, for example, that we'll use as a benchmark, but these are more generic types of surveys. There'll be something from Gallagher, Mercer, so I think they use four or five different surveys in addition to the customized surveys. We'll look at pay for performance, and what about range adjustments? How do we maintain, again, that competitive going forward? And finally, the third leg would be benefits. So we'd look at normal healthcare, dental, vision, life, voluntary insurance offerings. Some companies right now are offering voluntary benefits, some childcare assistance, pet insurance, life and home. We want to see and make sure that we're competitive with that. Contribution strategies on our benefits, how much does the city pay versus how much does the employee pay? And on the right side, you'll notice that very important to the millennials is wellness plans, having paid leave and time off and holidays and education assistance. And some companies now in cities are offering deferred contributions as well. So what would the outcomes look like? What we want to ensure is that we have a system that's consistent with their organizational structure, again, internally equitable. It's important for our employees to feel that their pay is comparable to their employees' pay, and they're paid fairly for what they do in relation to other employees. Again, externally competitive, something easily understood, and flexible to the changing needs of the city. We want to consider our own financial system as well in our budget and make sure it's financially sound, and ensure, again, mostly that it's sustainable as we go forward. Can we maintain the system? What compensation this total compensation system is about is not about an employee, not about an employee, a certain personality. What the staffing levels might be, it's not about eliminating jobs, adding positions, work hours, and a variety of other things. It's not about, oftentimes, they'll have a supervisor come in and say, "Well, my employee, boy, they have such an increase in workload." Well, we need to not only look at the volume of work, which really isn't a compensable factor, we need to look at what's the level and scope and breadth of the job. And so what can the city expect from a study like this? There'll be lots of employee involvement. We'll have focus groups and interviews with all levels of the organization. We'll have each employee complete a position description questionnaire. So this time, we know that, we know everyone has had input, and we understand what their job is. Many times when you're doing a general salary survey, or you take one of the surveys out there, they match job titles. They do not do an analysis, and they don't match the actual content of the work. And then what about the recommendations that come out of this? The consultant will work on different types of methodologies. They can phase in different recommendations. It'll be on the city's ability to pay, and we can also do two- and three-year implementation plans. So the request was that they do multi-year recommendations. And then finally, pay grade, structure, and titles can change or be adjusted. Pay may stay the same, or be adjusted if it's below the market. In our general practice, if a job's above the market, we will usually adjust accordingly, but we won't take any money away from employees. And that's real important for everyone to know, so that eases the anxiety that sometimes the study may cause for employees. So there's six phases in this, in this study. The first is the project initiation, where the city will provide a lot of information. There'll be some initial meetings, etc. Then we'll move to Phase Two, which is outreach and employee participation. Probably the most important piece, because here is where, during the orientation, we need to manage employee expectations, letting them know what to expect. We want to have accurate job descriptions. We want to make sure that employees are placed in the right classification. We don't necessarily, we don't necessarily think that employees, every employee's going to get a raise out of this. There'll be job classification analysis in the third phase, and this is really where we're validating that internal equity that I talked about earlier. And then we'll do market salary and benefit survey. We'll identify up to about 60 benchmarks that we'll look at, and then there'll be about 20 comparators that we will select. And the city, and the city team of directors will look at those comparatives as well, and with the consultant, and make some recommendations. In this case, we usually would take those 40,000 population up to about 90,000 in the state of Arizona. And then there are some outliers out there that we'll look at, especially on the public sector side. And then we'll look at solution analysis and development in terms of recommendations for career laddering and cost analysis. And then finally, we'll have reports, submitted recommendations, and the consultant will come to the city council to make recommendations. The project outline and timeline will be about four to five months, starting again with the phases with the project initiation all the way through to April. Another beauty of going with Evergreen is the fact that we are going to have training for the new system, so we can ensure that we can maintain that internal equity within the city. And then a little bit more about Evergreen, what we found out is they have, they are out of Florida. They really specialize in the compensation and benefits area. They've been doing it for about 18 years. They're privately owned, and they have a book of business in 46 states. And they focus on public sector. And some of the clients, and these are those that we did references on, as well as some out of state, City of Page, Pima County, City of Tucson, Maricopa County, Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority. And what I think we really liked about Evergreen is their philosophy, that it's not a cookie cutter approach, and that they really will partner with us to look at some customized solutions for the city of Prescott. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Joyce. Councilman Blair.
Hi, Joyce.
Hi.
I've been around a long time.
Yep, I know.
I can't tell you how many dances we've been through with this, and I'm not impressed, frankly, that it's coming back once again. 1998, we were so compressed with our fire service and our police, we had a mass exodus in the last 10 years of people leaving this community, which I call the city of Prescott. We've asked for this to take place numerous times, and it keeps coming back as we need to do another study, another study. At what point in time do we at Human Resources here in Prescott retain these studies and quit going out and asking somebody else their opinion, when we already know, based upon the classifications throughout, like cities like Prescott, Arizona, what our pay rates and what our benefits should be? We've put together panel after panel over the past 18, 19 years I've been on this council, and we're back at the trough one more time, asking for another study. When do we ever start retaining that study here and making it work? I know you're new, so I don't mean to beat up on you, but frankly, I'm tired of listening to it all, because our employees deserve the very best. And to wait four, or five, six years to do an analysis when we should be doing it every year based upon Human Resources and making sure our employees are within that parameter, we should be on top of this all the time and not wait for people to leave.
No, you know, and I agree with you. I think that it's really important for us to get a good baseline, and market data changes constantly. So the data that we have from five years ago is not accurate anymore. One of the things that I'm hoping that will come out of this study is that we will be able to maintain our pay ranges. Other cities, for example, every year, they do range adjustments. So you have a salary range with a minimum and a maximum. Well, cities adjust those on a yearly basis, so they shift them. So maybe they shift them 1% or 3%. Now, that doesn't mean the employee's getting any money, but there's more room for them to grow. And so that's one of the things that could possibly come out of this study that hasn't been done in the past. The second is in the internal equity, and the way we do internal equity in the city, it's highly subjective. And we will have a system that's a point factor type system, where we will give ratings to employees based on things like decision-making, and the scope of the work, and the type, and the technical ability that they have. So I think that this gives us an opportunity to make sure if we, if we look at all the steps, that we'll be able to maintain the system over time.
Well, and I hope that'd be the case, because the last time this was giving to us, the same conversation came up. And frankly, our employees deserve the best. We ask them to do a lot, and we need to make sure they're not topped out on their levels. We need to adjust those levels. We need to make sure we're doing the right thing. And again, when we saw here back in 2009, 10, 11, when people were leaving the city of Prescott because we couldn't afford to pay them, and of course, we were in a crunch time. But you can go on and ask your employees a thousand times over to keep taking cuts. We cut their benefits. We cut their dental. We cut all these different things. But at some point in time, you got to give it back.
Yes.
And you have to adjust those things. Because as if not, we're not in the competitive nature any longer, and we are a community that's competitive with everybody out there. So we want to retain those folks here, at least the core of them. I know we can't retain everybody, because everybody's always bargaining to give somebody something. But I would like to think that what we're doing by the analysis is to be able to have a baseline that we can go to every time without asking for another $40,000 or $50,000 to have somebody come in and ask us one more time to meet with all the employees, where the employees are going to tell you the same thing. We want the most that we can get.
Yes.
That's what it amounts to. So I would support this, but I don't know that I'll be around to see another one in my future. But I hope that it stays within your department, and that you are able to have a tool that we can use internally instead of continually going out and asking somebody else to come in and tell us what we need, because I think we already know what we need.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor Joyce. Welcome. It's good to see you. So I was surprised to hear that we had 200 job descriptions.
Too many.
And so will they be, it sounds like maybe there are a lot of boutique-type of descriptions that we've written a description, so it's kind of a backwards way to do it.
Yeah, I agree. 40% of our employees have their own job description. And that is likely because we ask them to do a lot more than maybe some of the bigger cities do. But we can have some career progressions within a pay range if we widen our range and move employees through that, and consolidate some of those job descriptions, which really need to be. It's very hard to maintain internal equity when you have so many job descriptions in the city. Because when if one job goes up over here, then someone else might want to request their job to go up as well.
And I agree with Councilman Blair. I think if there's something that we can do to, to keep it going and look at it annually as opposed to...
We would definitely have a system annually, and we'll also be making recommendations for job studies that are done during the year. And do we want to do those regularly, like ad hoc, or do we want to have a system for doing those as well?
And how often will Evergreen train? Is that part of the contract, or do we...
Well, they're actually giving us their system, and they're giving us their point factor system, and we're not paying any extra for that. That's included in their package, which is a really good tool. The city hasn't had anything like that, so that's something to be really excited about. And so once we're trained, and everyone in HR will be trained on the system, then we'll have to maintain it.
Nice, great.
Councilwoman Sishka.
Hi, Joyce. I really appreciate your job, or the work you're doing with the Adult Center, by the way. Thank you very much. My question is this, on boutique job descriptions, first of all, how do we, how did we develop all those descriptions? And how do we compare them to the norm? Because they're boutique. They're not a norm.
Well, there's going to be some outliers. There will be some specialty job descriptions that will have their own title. And that's true for every organization. I think that oftentimes, we all like to feel special. And when we're doing something more than just a generic job description that you might get in one of the packaged surveys, then you're going to want, you're going to want something more than that. And typically, what we do is if someone's doing the higher level work, more than 50% of the time, you pay them typically at the higher rate. You don't create a new job description for them. So we'll be looking at that as well. Did I answer your question?
Sure. Councilman Good.
Thank you, Joyce, for bringing this forward. Excuse my laryngitis. I'll do my best for the rest of the day. I did look at the list of references. You listed Page, Arizona, the town of Suarita, and Pima County. But in this slide here, you also listed Tucson, Maricopa County, and Maricopa Community College District. So why weren't they on the list of references? And have you contacted those references to find out how beneficial their study was and what the consequences?
I believe we contacted just about everybody. I don't think we contacted town of Suarita and Maricopa Community College District. But we did contact some others out of state as well.
So what were their experiences and conclusions?
They were absolutely excellent. They loved the provider. They loved the tool. They liked the new system they provided. They were really easy to work with. They had great communication and real responsive and on timeline, and the quality of their work was excellent.
And what were the results from the compensation to these municipalities as far as their cost to put new compensation programs?
You know, I think that, I think that can range, that can range from anywhere between just putting people up to the minimum if they're not at market, which could be minimal, all the way up to maybe a million or $2 million.
I know historically, government employees were recognized as being somewhat underpaid compared to the private sector, but they had better job security and clearly the benefit of pensions. And we are pretty understanding about the increasing costs of defined benefit pension systems. So will this study include the value of those defined benefit compensation systems?
Yeah, we're going to have them look at our public safety retirement system, as well as our Arizona State Retirement System.
Correct.
And so as part of the total comp, we can have them put something together on the value.
Yeah, that needs to be quantified, because that's a benefit that's rarely seen anymore in the private sector. It's almost all defined contribution, 401K types. Once this study is done, when can we expect conclusions and recommendations coming back to the council for action?
In April.
April?
The latter part of April. We'd like to get it in line with the budget, should the council decide to implement any of the recommendations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you, Joyce. I'm impressed with your level of professionalism. And I think it's important that we're, we have to recognize we are a major employer in the area, and it's important that we stay competitive, because like you said, it's, in order to attract the best, you know, I think we have to realize that we're competing with other entities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Joyce, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to item 3B, please.
Presentation from Delta Airport Consultants and city staff regarding airport master plan items, including inventory forecasts, facility requirements, selected alternatives, financials, airport layout plan, and public disclosure map.
From one of those unique job descriptions, boutique. I'm the airport director, Robin Sabata, and it's a pleasure to be here with you at this study session. I'd like to introduce Doug Sander, who is with Delta Airport Consultants. He's the team that's been working three years now on the airport master plan study. This is an unusual length of time. Typically, a master plan study takes about two years, but as you know, we've gone through a little bit of change in the last 18 or so months. And we're very thankful that Delta Airport Consultants has stuck with us through this change. In fact, during this change period, we've made more than 200 changes to the airport master plan and the airport layout plan, because the airport is in such an incredible growth mode right now. And keeping up and making sure that we do reflect that in our longest-term planning document is very important. So would you like to step up, Doug, and take over?
Mayor, council members? It's good to be back here in front of you again. As Robin said, it's been a while, I've been here a while. It was just over 15 months ago, when I was out here to present the airport layout plan, the last piece of the puzzle that the FAA requires to be approved for a, as part of the master plan. So today, we're going to be talking about the actual overall master plan itself. Agenda, we're going to talk about the process. We've been through this for three years now, but we'll go through that one more time. And we'll go through the individual chapters, the inventory, forecast, suite of requirements, briefly hit these, and then as well as the airport layout plan at the end, and the public disclosure map. So if you've been to any of my briefings before, you've seen this. In the past, we went through, we highlighted these as we went through and completed them. As you can see, they're all orange, which means they are now all complete. And specifically, under airport layout plan, last time we were here asking for council approval, that has been since approved by the FAA. And then the other element, other two elements really that the FAA has to approve are the aviation forecasts and the critical aircraft. The aviation forecasts were approved, however, due to the radical growth here in the past year or so. The FAA has been very kind in allowing us to update those forecasts. This will be the first time in the 20-plus years I've been doing this, they've allowed an airport to do that. That's how significant the changes have been here at Prescott. So the first part of the master plan process was, process was to look at the inventory, the existing conditions at the airport. And just briefly, running down, this is a very large and diverse airport as far as the services. Three runways, two parallels, 1,700, one of them, the primary, 7,619 feet long, 150 feet wide. A smaller parallel runway for G aircraft, and then a crossroom runway used for, for when, the winds aren't exactly the best for the primary runways. There are five full-length parallel atta- There are five full-length parallel taxiways to serving those three runways. Prescott has an air traffic control tower staffed by FAA. There are multiple flight schools led by Mary Riddle, Aeronautical University. There are many different types of hangars at the airport, between T-hangers for single-engine piston aircraft to large hangars for corporate aircraft. The US Forest Service is a very large employer and tenant to the airport. There's a full-service FBO, Legend Aviation. They provide fuel. They provide services to those aircraft that fly in from other airports that need a place to refuel and for pilots to lounge around during the day while their tenants are out doing business. On-site ARF services. This is fantastic that an airport has this. It's required for air carrier service. This is your firefighting services that are on the airport. Obviously, the biggest change in the past 12 months is the addition of United Express Commercial Service, which has been a boon to the airport and the community. There's an onsite harassment, Suzie's Cafe. It's great for every airport to have a restaurant for people to come by and look at airplanes while they eat. That's great. And then onsite car rental and valet service, very important for those people flying in to be able to have a rental car available. Couple little bullets down here. Prescott with the addition of the SkyWest United Express Service is now considered a primary commercial service airport versus non hub. They are currently the 44th, or you are considered currently the 44th busiest airport in the country based on operations. That's takeoff and landings out of the 30, no, 4,300 airports in the country, 44th. Pretty significant. And with the United Express service to both Denver and Los Angeles, it connects Prescott to the world with one stop, really. United has service from Denver to Europe and Asia. So it's fantastic. Or LA through to Asia. After the inventory, there was nothing. What happened there? We lost a slide. That was a very important slide.
That's okay. Just stop.
Okay. So this slide was aviation forecast, which we were about to redo. Don't know what happened here, but also I'll first talk about the critical aircraft. Critical aircraft is the aircraft that the airport facilities are designed around, the pavement, the safety areas, and the clearance spaces. Isn't technology wonderful? There we go. Okay. So the existing critical aircraft is the current aircraft that is served by, that is used by United Express, the CRJ-200, 50-seat regional jet. That's considered a C2 class aircraft. That's existing. The proposed in the future is to go to an Embraer 170 or 175 aircraft, which is 70, 70 six seats. That is considered C3. So it's a larger aircraft. So the standards are on that. We'll be, we'll be built to a larger standard. Fortunately, the airport is currently C3, so not a whole lot needs to be changed as far as those dimensions go. The biggest change, of course, is the runway length, which we'll get into a little bit later. On the left side up, or the right side are the aviation forecasts. The forecast were for based aircraft, the aircraft that actually live at the airport, the operations, the takeoff and landings, and the implantments. The FAA has agreed to have us relook at the operations of the air carrier aircraft because there's been change from Great Lakes to United Express. They've also, we're also going to look at the passenger implantments. As you see down here at the bottom, the implantments, this shows actual implantments to date. So starting in 2016, when this was begun, when the master plan was begun, we were just over 3,500. Our forecast, based on the current service at the time, did not show that going up greatly and did not show us getting to roughly 21,000 until 2031. And as you can see, in 2019, you will far surpass that with, right now, actually not 27,500, but almost 28,000 or more.
As a matter of fact, we're looking at about 33,000 for next year.
Next year. So pre-bookings are looking good. So great for the airport. So the FAA has recognized that. And next, next council meeting, you'll be getting a proposal in front of you to redo those forecasts, which we hope to have done very quickly and get those incorporated into the, the master plan with IVA's approval. I think that's just, you said earlier, never had this done before, so you should be very proud that you got this accomplished. Okay. Now let me go back to the next one. Okay. So after the FAA approved the forecasts and the critical aircraft, we actually looked at what does the airport need to meet those requirements? And well, as other standards and, and issues that the FAA has. One of the big issues that prompted this master plan was the FAA changed the design standards back in 2012. So a lot of things changed between the previous master plan in 2010 and when we got started. What you see up here, the three columns are the three different phases, 0 to 5 years, 6 to 10, 11 to 20. A lot of projects are shown in the first year because there are a lot of needs at this airport. Those needs include the terminal development, which is underway, the runway extension for the primary runway, as well as a lot of rehabilitation. As you can see, there's a lot of rehabilitation up there of the pavement and lighting at the airport. The airport's been constantly doing that, but there's a lot of pavement and lighting on that airport to begin with, with three runways and all the taxiways. So it's a constant effort to keep up with those pavements and the other facilities at the airport. So this is, this is a program. This is what was, came out of the master plan. It does, does not necessarily mean these will be done exactly within these timeframes. They will be shuffled around based on priority, based on funding, and how things change. In fact, three of these, actually bottom three under Phase 1, the PAPs, the signs and the taxiway rehabilitation, as of last week, were in Phase 2. After since then, they've been moved up to Phase 1 based on the FAA and the Arizona State Department of Transportation actually stepping up and providing funding for those in an earlier timeframe. So that's, that's great news for the airport to get that funding now. So we also, also noted a couple areas up there, private development. While these are needs at the airport, it doesn't necessarily mean they are going to be funded by the airport themselves. Hangars, FBO improvements, those types of items all should be funded by private investment throughout the course of the, the program. So after we came up with the pseudo-rerequirements, what the actual airport needed, we had to figure out what's the best way to accomplish these. So we looked at alternates for a lot of the primary development projects. For instance, for the primary runway, three right, two on left, we looked at three possible extensions for that runway, including shifting it, actually about 2,000 feet versus what we came up with, which was shifting it about 300 feet and extending the rest of the way. So that was a very in-depth analysis of, of impacts, costs for those three. And that was carried through for the other two runways, taxiway, relocations and standards, Roma Visibility Zone, air traffic control tower, and then GA development. And then we also looked at two alternatives for Clubhouse Drive circulation, as far as how we could accomplish that. That project has since been removed from the airport layout plan as consideration. It is included as a future study to see if it actually will happen, but is not depicted or on the approved airport layout plan. But for all the other items and approved, plan was developed and included on the plan. And here is a very simplified version of what the preferred alternative or the selected layout that the council selected, which shows, we'll start with the big one, the primary runway extension. That's a 2,381-foot extension as of today. The airport does have a project in line to do a feasibility study on that, to exactly, if that's exactly what we're going to do. What this does, this actually shifts the runway. And one of the things it does is it actually brings the runway protection zone, those trapezoidal shapes on the end of the runway. Currently, it actually goes off airport property to the, to the south. By shifting the runway, it's going to bring that completely on city property, be it the golf course or the, or the airport. So that's a very good improvement there. We also, one project that is actually going to be starting construction next year is the relocation of Taxiway Charlie. This is a standards project. The current runway taxiway separation does not meet current standards. So that is going to be relocated further away from the runway, which in effect, which in turn actually snowballs into a whole couple of other projects, including the, the apron rehabilitation. Actually, some demo work at the terminal building in order to meet clear, clear zones and safety areas. Another big part of the, of the master plan was looking at runway incursion mitigation. Runway incursion mitigation is aircraft, pedestrians, and vehicles driving or moving about on an airport piece of pavement that they shouldn't be. So the FAA has got a major program to try and prevent these incursions. And the Taxiway Charlie project actually will be taking care of several of those. The runway rehabilitation already took care of one, two? Charlie would take care of two. And one of the major elements of that is actually reducing the length of your GA runway. So three left, two on right will have to be reduced in order to help the mitigation of the incursion problems. So as part of that, in the future, the plan is to actually extend that runway to get that length back and also, also extend it to accommodate the aircraft, the training aircraft. Because currently, right now, that runway at 40, roughly 4,800 feet is also, is oftentimes a little short for some of the operations. So extending that runway to accommodate them so that that runway can be used all the time by the training aircraft is a major element of that. And then up in the corner is the big one that's currently going right now is the terminal development. We do show a large, a new large commercial service terminal, new parking lot up there. And actually, it does show an expansion of the terminal as well, which based on the, the current projections, yeah, might be needed sooner rather than later. But the other areas that we show on there, a lot of GA development, a lot of hangars. Now, these hangars aren't going to happen as shown here, and they're not going to happen now. These are general ideas of what can be done as far as T-hangers go, as your corporate hangars go, your FBO development. This is to give a rough general idea of what can be developed in these areas. It doesn't mean they're going to happen now.
Use the, can this pointer? Can we get the pointer on here? Click once? Sorry.
I'll go back.
Yeah, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can you show us or point to us where the existing?
There it is.
Existing terminal is?
Sure.
The second question is, is there any more thought about that becoming airplane, airport museum? Are they going to remove it?
Okay, so we'll address the first one. This is where the existing terminal is, is right here in this corner. And this is where the new terminal is going to go, is right along this area here. Okay. And this is the new ramp area that leads out to the taxiway. And this is future development. If we ever need to expand in that direction, we have the option to expand the terminal this way or this way. So it gives us a lot of opportunity to expand here. The old terminal, current terminal, we're looking at a variety of uses. We actually had a committee that looked at a reuse of the terminal for things, including a museum, additional retail opportunities, and intermodal transportation stops such as for transit between the cities. And also, there's a possibility when we made it, need it for, for administration, if we ever have to expand into the administration pad. So we've got a lot of flexibility at this site as to the directions we could go.
But the plan is to leave it in place?
The current plan is to leave the additional here, if I can show this right here. It's kind of hard to see because it's small. There's sort of a little arc here. And that's the main terminal complex, which is 4,400 square feet. The entire terminal is 10,000 square feet, but this object sticking out right here is the TSA wing. And that is a safety issue. And that is exactly why the terminal was submitted as a safety project first and foremost because the, when we moved Taxiway Charlie, which is this long surface here, 75 feet to the north, so it's going to be like this. What'll end up happening is it'll even add one more penetration. That's a safety penetration that needs to be mitigated with this project. So again, that is why the, the terminal has, that wing has to come off and you can't have air carrier operations in there without a TSA area.
I was more concerned about the history of the existing terminal and not all the additions that are tacked on to it.
Yeah.
About the overall usage in the end. So thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I am so excited that we're talking about the new airport. I can see where the new air traffic control tower is located. Can you show me where the old one, the current one, is located?
Right in this area.
Right there. So we are moving it down so it will be in, have good visibility of the extensions.
That's actually part of the runway-focused planning study, is to look at whether or not the visibility from this location will still be adequate based on the projected length that we will need. And the way the FAA looks at it, you have to sort of estimate about 10 years out and see what you think your dominant aircraft or your critical aircraft will be. So that's what's going to be visited for the next seven months in the study that is underway on focused runway planning right here. So we might have an extension that could be as little as 2,300, as much as maybe 3,300, but ultimately, that will be determined. Then there is a tool that you use, an FAA tool, from this location to determine whether or not you have a necessary line of sight to that end. So that's where we'll make the decision. We had preliminarily run the tool. And the tool says that at about 10,800 feet, it does appear that we will need a new tower. But if it's less than 10,800 feet, we may not need a new tower. But there's other factors, visibility factors that will be examined.
So the tower's currently in Phase 2, but do you think it might have to be moved into Phase 1 or we just don't know yet?
I can report back in about seven months to the council. Whether or not we have a better feel for that. And a second item that has to be addressed is the Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Station. We have an obligation with our ARF requirements to make it to the midpoint of the furthest commercial service runway within three minutes of the time that we get an emergency and dispense agent. And so again, if the runway length is there, we're going to have to do our time tests and see whether or not in this focused runway planning study that the ARF station relocation would be an essential part. So those are two items that need to be determined, say, in about five to seven months.
Thank you. It looks like we're in good hands.
Thanks. And just, he mentioned a couple of other things. This is the runway extension. Up here, you can see, these are the trapezoids to which he was referring, that we need to protect for the, for the runway safety areas. This is some future development area that might be great for the airport. And these are the areas where future hangars may be privately developed. So we may see some private development in these three areas that will be quite favorable to the future of the airport and the community.
Can you point out the fuel farm as well?
Sure. It's actually located right down here, right there. Isn't it right? Yeah. Yeah, that dark spot right there. That's the fuel farm. And the FBO is this large area over here. Anything else that you want me to point out? Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So with the, with the different alternatives chosen and preferred layout chosen, the next step was cost estimating and financial planning. So what you see here is actually a little different than what you have in front of you or what you received in your packet. The numbers have recently updated. And like to report that numbers came down, which was good. But as you can see here, as far as funding contribution over the 20-year life of the development project proposing the master plan, roughly 144 million would be coming from the FAA through the AIP program or supplemental funding. Roughly just under 7 million from Arizona Department of Transportation. Just under nine from the city of Prescott. And then around 19 million, we looked at private development. Those are the hangars that we talked about and FBO expansion. So we're looking at roughly $180 million over those 20 years. On the, the right side, it's broken down into phases. It's a little, little tight there. But we're showing Phase 1, the next five years, roughly $112 million, I believe. Phase 2 drops quite a bit and Phase 3 goes back up. But again, Phase 1 is, is as high as it is because of the terminal building, the runway extension, and it's a lot of standards projects in those first five years.
It's important to note that 31 million of that is being accomplished in the next 18 months of the, and so when you start to look at that, we're making a lot of progress. And 3.5 million is the amount that you've allocated for the terminal. So that is part of the 8.7 million.
So heavy on the front end, but again, a lot of that is FAA funding. Most of it is FAA funding. So with that, we developed the airport layout plan drawing set. There were 41 sheets in this set. That is a very large set, but mostly because you have three runways and each of those runways have two ends. So that's six runway ends, plus we had to do those for both existing and future conditions. So that was a lot of the development. The main, main sheets that the FAA cares about are the airport layout plan and the airport layout plan data sheet, as well as the airport property map. Again, these were all, they're at the FAA's headquarters or FAA Phoenix office for signature right now. Again, 41 sheets. It was a lot of work to get that done. Again, 41 sheets, it was a lot of work to get that done. But again, it was a big airport and there's a lot of good stuff, information in that airport layout plan set. So with that approved, wraps up the ALP set, the FAA approval part of it. One other element that was included, oh, well, here's the airport layout plan. I showed you that earlier on, which was nice and cleaned up. This is a little, little dirtier. This is actually what the FAA requires to be shown on their airport layout plan. The different colors do depict the different phases. So orange is current phase, zero to five, then yellow is the next second phase, and green is the last phase. But yes, there's a, there's a lot going on in this drawing and I would encourage you not to get too involved looking at it. So, airport public disclosure map requirement, would you? I'm going to step up.
Yeah, it looks like it didn't come up again?
No, it's right there.
So one of the requirements we have is we have to produce a public disclosure map. It's required under Arizona Revised Statute and it's a way of being able to communicate to folks and a common website all throughout the state of Arizona, any potential airport influence that may be in communities around an airport. On the left-hand side, what you see, let me see if I click it. Can I go back one? There we go. So this was what we brought to council and was approved previously at the time that we approved the airport layout plan. And because of the fact that, you can see it wasn't the box right here, didn't match the 2001 navigation easement disclosure that we had done. And because of the fact that the nature of the training operations at our airport are primarily flight training, and as a result, those flight training operations, 75% of those stay in the pattern. And we wanted to well communicate to the community that there is a tremendous amount of overflight in this entire area, remaining in the pattern, doing takeoffs and landings. We mentioned that we're the 44th busiest airport in the country. In 2002, we were actually almost 100,000 operations higher than we are now. And with the surge in flight training and pilot training that is going to be happening over the next five years in response to the pilot shortage, we anticipate that we are going to have an increase in total operations, perhaps back to our record years. If we do, we will be the 25th busiest airport in the nation. And we want to make sure that people who make investments in homes or other items, they know that there is going to be a tremendous amount of overflight. So this adjusted box, which evens out to a square, the impact all the way around the airport environment, reflecting the airport's traffic pattern in both directions, when it's on the main runway and when it's on the crosswind runway. Then what you have is you have it better reflecting the actual navigation easements that folks sign and have been signing since 2001 to notify them of the overflight and to basically agree to that overflight being over those residents that are in that community. So this is what you'll be approving today, is a slightly larger box. It also reflects additional annexations that have occurred since the time of the last disclosure map that you approved, that occurred over here. And you can see these reflect the city of Prescott jurisdiction, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, and this little piece right here is actually an extension of this area up here, as well as the state lands and the county lands. So we actually overlap five different jurisdictions within the airport's disclosure map. We want to make sure and show you that we are adjusting that and we will be uploading that to the Arizona Department of Real Estate website, so folks will have the most current overflight information. And that's it.
Good presentation, thank you. Questions coming from the council?
I have one.
Councilman Blair?
We talk about how busy and how big our airport is. In retrospect, I guess in looking at maybe Deer Valley or Mesa, how does our airport compare in landmass and size to those as well?
In landmass?
Right.
I can't tell you. I can tell you in terms of busyness.
Well, what I'm looking at is, you know, when you start talking about Scottsdale Airport and how it's grown commercially?
Yes.
And the land that surrounds Scottsdale Airport, how does that compare to the city of Prescott? Maybe you don't know that, but for future comparison, when you start talking about future expansion of commercial zones, it would be nice if the public knew what we might be in store for in the next 10, 15 years.
And that's a really good point. I'm going to go ahead and go back to this for just a moment. That is one of the reasons that City Manager Lamar and I have been talking about the possibility of expansion, because at Scottsdale Airport, what you have is you have a, you have a constrained airport that has a real narrow boundary, but around the airport, there are these areas where we could potentially develop airpark and commerce. And, and so this is one of the things that we're looking at for this area. Certainly, there's a lot of commercial development going on privately up here and we see that as being a good partner for the development in that area. So we, we could begin to explore something like the Scottsdale Airpark model. The tricky part is the FAA is really careful about what we call through-the-fence operations. And what that means is they want the airport to be as self-sustaining as possible, so they don't want to open up the fence line and allow folks outside the airport perimeter who aren't helping to maintain the economic viability of the airport to take advantage of that property. So while it's good to have things that are good for the community, the FAA maintains that in its grant assurances, you shall also make sure that the airport remains, you know, self-sufficient as possible.
I guess my point, maybe Mr. Lamar could add to that. I guess, does that look at the fact that the city may look at purchasing more property for further expansion?
Councilman, it's twofold and Robin alluded to one of it. It's, you want to have land contiguous to the airport for economic development opportunities, A, and then B, you want to have land that you control, that's in your ownership to have a decent buffer from the airport. So it's, basically, city ownership of surrounding lands is beneficial for twofold. One, for economic development, two, for buffering impacts to the airport.
Land use compatibility is critical, absolutely.
And I think the reason why I'm bringing it up is, I was an FAA installer for window coverings for these cabs. And did about six in the western United States, including Long Beach, Scottsdale, this airport out here. And I saw Scottsdale Airport go from zero being around it to being a mass commerce, great expansion for the city. And I just wondered if that's something that we could model Prescott to be after in the future? It would be something that people that live out there would probably want to know.
Yes. Actually, I've been looking at the minimum standards for commercial operation out of the Scottsdale Airport for some time. And I think an airpark model out here actually could be a win-win for the community as well as the airport and its future viability. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Sabata, for all you've done for our airport. I'd also like to recognize we have some committee members in the audience, Michael Getty and Frank Newman. Thank you for your work.
Actually, there was an extensive group that helped.
I know.
With all of this and we did make up a little slide. And if I could just share that, that would be, this is everybody over the last three years. Well, can I? Looks like we've got to zoom it down a little bit, perhaps? There we go. There we go. Big thank yous, obviously.
Absolutely.
Frank and Michael, thank you so much for the leadership and guidance that you provided through the airport advisory committee and also through the master planning process. But you can see a lot of folks have been in here and I'd like to give a shout out to councilmembers Phil Good and Steve Shishka for the great work that you've done to support the airport. I was sitting next to you on this committee before I became airport director and we were talking about our vision for the future. Who'd have thunk that we'd be here a couple of years later and, and we're doing everything we thought we could do and more. So thank you very much for all the effort. And let's be completely honest, without a supportive council like this, without the support of an amazing city manager and a leadership team, this would not have happened. This is your vision. I'm just helping you bring it to fruition.
Other questions, comments from the council? I will say, you know, it's very exciting. And then you look at the, the amount of money, you know, that's going to be spent, which is tremendous. But it's nice to know we've already taken a few bites of that elephant, to know that, you know, we're, we're on our way. So it's, it's very encouraging. Thank you, Robin. Public comment?
I just want to, first of all, say fantastic job. This is awesome. The question that, I really have a question more than a comment, though. In the plan that was presented, it showed an extension of 2,381 feet, which would make the runway right at 10,000 feet. That's the plan that's been submitted to the FAA? And if so, if you want to run it out to the 10,800 feet that you mentioned without having to relocate the tower, would, would that still be an option to run it out to 10,000, to 10,800 feet? Because as a retired airline pilot from Southwest Airlines, and I'm sure you've talked to many pilots, every pilot will say, the longer the better when it comes to the runway for safety. I mean, every last foot of runway makes that takeoff and landing just a little more safe than the shorter runway. So my real question is, is 10,800 feet still an option or are we going to be limited to 10,000 feet?
May I answer directly?
Anything else that you have?
That's it.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
So that's why we're doing the focused runway planning study and I think it's really important. As our consultant had indicated, every one of these is a good idea of where we think we want to be at five, 10, and 20 years. But then each one has its own layer of studies that have to be conducted, depending on the complexity and the size of the project. In the case of the focused runway planning study, we're going through the first phase. Then after that, there will be an environmental phase. And then after that, there will be a land acquisition phase. And then after that, there will be a design followed by a construction phase. And that's why I had estimated between four and a half and seven years. And I have noted the mayor's comment that he would like it in three. I get that. And I think I echo that sentiment. But the range, it does not limit you in an airport layout plan. What would happen is if we come back from the focused runway planning study and it is determined that the optimal link for the current aircraft or the aircraft that's going to use the airport within that 10-year period does require a longer takeoff and landing surface, then we would have to amend the airport layout plan. So it's really important. The FAA only actually approves three things in your master plan. One is your forecasts. One is your airport layout plan, which includes that, so you have to revise that. And one is your critical aircraft. So all three of those would have to be then reconfirmed by the FAA and we would come back to council, of course, to let you know that there'd be a change in the airport layout plan. And then that would be reflected before we would be eligible for the funding associated with what might be a 30 to 40 million dollar runway extension.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Shishka?
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, it's a pleasure to have you up there. Good job. What is involved? What do you hope to discern in an environmental study?
So there are three different types of environmental studies that come about as a result of National Environmental Policy Act of 1969. It's called NEPA. And as a result, depending on the complexity of the project, there are things called a categorical exclusion, which means generally, you don't need a full, a study. We can, we review things and make sure there's not extenuating circumstances, but that's granted in like two to three months. A slightly more intensive study is called an environmental assessment and we believe that's what we're going to need for the runway extension. And that will be about a year-long study, probably around 300, $350,000. And that particular study will look at, I think it's 24 different categories of potential environmental impacts, including cultural resources and 404 flood plains and wildlife and, and economic, yes, there's, there's so many different ones that we could talk about, water, air, noise. And so that's what it involves and there'll be a number of public hearings. Now, we're starting those public hearing outs, hearings out early in the planning process so we can get things out early. But even, for example, the train trusses might be a historical element that might be in that departure zone. So interesting, right, what you might run into. So an environmental study can be very complex. If you find an extraordinary circumstance, let's take Los Angeles International Airport as an example, you could have an environmental impact statement or study that would take you as many as 10 years. We don't think we're going to be in that place, but that was, in that case, I remember there was a conflict between the El Segundo Blue Butterfly and the Riverside Ferry Shrimp versus economic justice, environmental justice issue at the other end with low-income community. So you have some real complexities at very large airports. So the short answer is, it could range between three months and 10 years. The probability for Prescott is about a year.
Another question. Thank you.
In one of my further lives, didn't we already do an environmental impact for the runway extension that fell by the wayside?
That's a really good question. My understanding is we did engage in environmental impact study relating to a runway extension and it stopped with the air traffic control tower. Folks in air traffic feeling that the proposed extension at that time would have been detrimental to their ability to achieve line of sight.
So we didn't continue on with it?
It was stopped at that point.
I knew we were counting bunny rabbits at one time, so.
You, that, truly, you will be looking at wildlife issues as a significant part of any environmental study, but there's so much more. Yeah.
Update on the terminal construction groundbreaking date?
We're in site prep right now. The first row of millings was, was removed today and we will be going into our groundbreaking on January 7th. Officially, that's our announcement and more information will be forthcoming.
Very good. Well, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, just as a final comment, I want to thank you and your staff for all the work you've done. As our consultant here from Dibble mentioned, it may have taken us another 11 years to achieve the same type of growth that we achieved in a year and a year and a half. So consequently, the amount of angst you had to deal with, with the federal government and the fact that you're still smiling is quite laudable. And I think the community at large has a lot of concerns because of this rapid and radical growth. But I think as we embrace this planning and the commitments and, and we get our checks cashed from the FAA, that we're going to have a real economic driver for our community in the long run. And it'll benefit not only Prescott, but all of our neighbors as well. So I just want to assure the community that this is a great plan. It's going to benefit so many of our residents and our neighbors. And a lot of the concerns, I think, once the terminal is completed, the additional air service we're going to see is going to be much more acceptable and improving than a lot of them, a lot of the fears I've heard voiced. So, for example, when I asked City Manager Lamar to try to make sure we had airport proximity signs placed in all the surrounding neighborhoods, because we know we have a requirement for aviation easement in property purchases, there's so much of those properties being turned into rentals.
Yes.
That we don't have the same requirement that those people that are leasing homes for rental, they need to be aware of it as well. So we did hear some comments, but it's, I think it's, it's not only for public safety, but public acceptance of this big, big project. So again, I want to thank you for all your hard work, for the rest of your staff, Kristi.
She's great, isn't she? Kristi Miller? She's done so much work.
I've been this. Thank you very much.
And she, she was a part of the architect of the 10,000 campaign along with John Heiney, which was so successful and positioned us to be able to get the additional funds this year. So thank you very much for your work, Kristi.
We, we hear these updates and I think they're important, even though, you know, we hear many of the same things again, the community at large needs to hear them on a regular basis, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. I don't think there's anything else here, so thanks again, guys. Appreciate it. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.